Okay, everyone, I see six o'clock on my phone, so I am going to call the meeting to order. And I'm going to ask Shandra to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Agrover Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Agrover Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, July 17th, 2020.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Present.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Okay. Can I have an executive, a motion rather, to go into executive?
I make that motion.
I will second it, Mrs. Sullivan.
Okay. Show of hands? All in favor? We will go to executive. I'll see you on the other side and we'll enter the other meeting. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order. There's the gavel. I want to thank you all for joining us for our July regular business meeting. I do apologize, we were held up for a few minutes. It's a very busy time. So I do, I do thank you for indulging us a few minutes late. And I'm going to ask Shandra if you'd please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Agrover Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Agrover Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and social media on Friday, July 17th, 2020.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis is absent. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Let me see. She's toggling. They, I have to say it, huh? To unmute, yeah, I'll give her a minute.
I'm trying.
There she is. All right, Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi? I'll give her a minute to get on. Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. Okay. If you can all, when you see the flag appear on the screen, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance together. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Well, thank you again, everyone, for joining us for our July regular business meeting. Just a couple of quick items before we move to the superintendent's report. I've been thanking many of our staff over the past number of meetings. And I want to kind of move it around a little bit, so tonight, I want to give a shout out to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Steve Santilli, to our Director of Human Resources, Dr. Terry Charlton, and to our Assistant to the Business Administrator, Mrs. Jamie Shoemaker. They are three individuals that are part of this team that you see that runs this, helps keep these meetings going and helps run this district. They are present at all of our meetings. And they are key members of our central office staff. And they are hardworking folks. They are great dedicated folks, and I thank them very much. And so we're going to just keep the thanks going as we go from meeting to, to our next meeting. We are in the midst of the road back. This is going to be one of the most difficult things we've ever had to do. The guidance changes daily. And again, I'm going to repeat something I've said before. I'm going to ask everyone on this call, everyone listening live, everyone watching or listening to this recorded later on, we all need to work together and do the best we can on this. It's job one right now. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Gruccio for superintendent's report. Following that, we're going to have a little bit of scheduling updates to do to go along with our road back plan that you'll hear from Kim in a minute. And with that, I will, I will turn it over.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. Pete, I echo your sentiments and I thank you for taking the time for the recognition tonight. I appreciate that. My staff appreciates that. Yes, we are certainly in unprecedented times, and I joke and around and I say we're in the upside down, but we are in the upside down. We're traveling a bumpy road that no SUV can handle without a struggle, and the struggle is real. You know, not getting into too much of the struggle, but I'll tell you, we got guidance, but the guidance doesn't match executive orders, state statutes, laws, and codes. The guidance changes on a whim and school districts are still held to creating a plan to return to school, basically their eyes closed and their fingers crossed. And I am absolutely aware that our community is anxious to hear about a plan, and I hear you and I owe you a plan. But I do want you to know that we've been working for months on the possibilities of and plans related to the reopening of schools. And my timeline was shared with the board last Tuesday, and it's been, I was transparent and put it in our district newsletter, which we will share in a moment. What I'm proud to say, and part of our planning process, getting to a plan that we'll be able to share with you, is that last week, over a four-day span, we held 15 stakeholder meetings on the 11 road back to school topics. There was approximately 800 Agrover Township stakeholders that participated, and that is absolutely awesome. It was great to be able to hear their voices, and I thank all who came out and offered their ideas for us to ponder. They were all noted. Our meetings had meeting minutes. And a special recognition at this time to my administrative staff for taking that direction, taking the criteria that was outlined by me, and then taking a leadership role in facilitating those stakeholder meetings. So it was a great job. We got a lot of work done in a short amount of time. I was able to attend more than half of those meetings, and I viewed the others. And I'm very, very proud of my team and the work that they do for all of us and for our students each and every day. Those meetings ended on Thursday night, and we spent time over this weekend reviewing data and gleaning the big ideas from the suggestions that we got and the ideas that we got. Today, we spent about three hours to discuss the 11 areas in the road back to school. And this involved my administrative team and the facilitators on a virtual meeting. As you can imagine, there was many, many scenarios, and with every idea, there are roadblocks that have to be tackled and thrown off the path. So I'll sit here tonight and say that we are proud to say that we're close to having a plan that is relevant to meet the needs of our stakeholders. I also sit here and want to make it clear that I was not in any way going to sprint down this crazy road, but rather take my time and take our time as a team to analyze the guidance, analyze some other plans, analyze ideas, and learn about solutions. Some people had hardships on this road. Learn from their mistakes so that we can come up with solutions to build a plan, a solution to the roadblocks as we're making sure that we release a plan that we know can quickly change at any time. And we were seeing plans that have changed at spur of the moment. So I want, I'm being cautious, but that doesn't mean I'm being ignorant to it all. So I want to make that clear that we are planning. So basically, here's where we are. You have, we have to go back to school, okay? There's, has it, we have to offer an in-person option for education, and that's probably going to look like in-person with a virtual component, which we are referring to as a hybrid option. And now, after a couple of days of struggle and the voices of superintendents, we have the approval from the governor for parents to opt out of in-person school and go full-time with virtual learning. So there's a virtual learning option we're going to refer to as a virtual learning academy. This was a huge breakthrough for the schools in the state of New Jersey and for the parents and the students to be able to have this option, because previously, that was not an option, okay? So the governor gave us that good news, a little confusing because then he referred to athletics, being able to go back, and that was later clarified in the day that full contact workouts for athletic is for recreation and travel teams and not our high school athletics, because our high school athletics are governed by the NJSIA, and they've already put their plan in place. So we have to work with what we get and when we get it, and then we build from there. As I'm speaking right now, our work on this plan is being analyzed right now. We had three hours of discussion today and planning, and my staff was told to sleep on it. We will convene tomorrow. We will discuss. And like I said, we're closed, and I'm confident by the end of the day tomorrow that we'll have a plan. So where do we go from there? I only say plan. We'll have recommendations for ideas for a plan. Where do we go from there? The ideas that will, that are derived from the stakeholder meetings that we had, the collaboration that the administrative team and facilitators had, we need to come together as a district road back to school committee, in which that would include our committee reps and our Board of Education members. As you know, last week, we talked about having a meeting on July 28th, a board meeting on July 28th. I respectfully request at this time that we rename next Tuesday's night's board meeting to be a district road back to school committee meeting. And then look to hold the special board meeting the following week, I'm looking at August 3rd, to vote on that, that plan. So again, we're narrowing down options, trying to package a couple of options for discussion here in, you know, with my administrative team. We'll share that Tuesday night with a full district committee, okay? And then the next week, look to approve something that we can share with the public and then be ready to survey the public based on our plan. So you like it, it works for you, send your kid back to school. You know what? I'd rather go with a virtual learning academy. Okay, so that's what I have it narrowed down to. Mr. Castellano, I do have my district newsletter to present, but I believe this is a time where you may want to have conversation regarding my request.
Okay, beautiful. Thanks, Kim. So, and thanks for that report and update on all the very important work that's going on, difficult work that's going on. So I'm going to ask for a the indulgence of the board, you know, by way of straw poll. First is that next Tuesday's meeting, which is already scheduled and advertised, which will begin at 6:00 PM, will now be our road back committee meeting. It's a fully advertised meeting. The full board will be present, but our entire road back committee will be present as well. Are our board members okay with that? Just kind of looking for a-
Do you think it's at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Yeah, it is, okay.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought it was 7:00, but I do have 6:00 o'clock, okay.
Show of hands?
So I have Mr. Price, Mrs. Sullivan, Mrs. Summer, Mr. Delabarka, Mrs. Salagi, and Mr. Castellano, Mr. Price. Yep, this is where I got it all, okay. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, no, okay. Yes, thumbs up. Unanimous thumbs up.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Now, the next thing that we need to do is to repurpose Monday, August 3rd. That was, that's already on your calendars as committee meeting night. That's Monday, August 3. You'll see that's on your calendar. I'm asking for the board's okay to repurpose that night and have that be a regular board meeting. It'll convene at 7:00 PM, just as our regular board meetings do. And it will be advertised that, that business, all business can be done. But our primary focus will be on, as Dr. Gruccio said, reviewing and hopefully settling in and approving a road back plan for the district. So I'm going to ask for a show of hands if board members are okay with repurposing Monday, August 3rd, so that we can advertise it.
I just have a question, Mr. Castellano.
Sure.
Thank you. I apologize. So since we generally have our meetings on Tuesdays, and the public's used to having meetings on Tuesdays, is there a reason that we aren't maybe pushing it to that Tuesday, August 4th, so that, you know, the public, just out of routine, you know, more people might be looking for a meeting on a Tuesday rather than a Monday? Just putting that out there. There could be a reason-
Yeah, I agree, and I'm gonna, Shandra, help me out here. So normally, we do meet on a Tuesday, but if you recall, we have been building our calendars around the-
National Night Out.
National Night Out. And so that's why we had, we built our calendar with an August 3 as opposed to an August 4, you know, because of the National Night Out. And when we voted on our, we approved our calendar in January, nobody knew, you know, we'd be here and there wouldn't be, you know.
And I apologize, because that was the 3rd, not the 4th, I already made plans that night, so I'm, I would not be available, so I'm sorry about that.
I mean, August 3rd is fine with me. I just was wondering, and that totally makes sense. So if everyone else is okay with it.
So let me first, Ms. Howke, you wouldn't be available on the 3rd or the 4th?
On that Tuesday, the 4th.
Oh, sorry, I had my mic off. So you based your plans on the calendar? And that's what I was trying, you know, I realized that we, you know, moved it to the Monday because of National Night Out. There's no longer a National Night Out, but my concern was that board members and administration, you know, had already built that night into their calendar. But that's, that's why we're talking now. So- Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Castellano, this is Mrs. Floyd. I was just going to say that I think that, you know, since it was already on a calendar and no one, you know, for, you know, saw this coming, but I think that we should just make sure that we do, make sure that we blitz it and advertise it, because the last thing we want is to say, uh-huh, you know, here they are having a meeting on Monday, and we usually have it on Tuesday, and we don't want anybody from the community to miss this important information. Whether they attended or not, we want to make sure that it is known to everyone that the meeting for the road back is going to be on that, to vote on that. It's going to be on August 3rd. So I just, that's only my suggestion that we just do that, and I do believe National Night Out, they are, they're not doing physically National Night Out, but I believe they're having something where people are coming out on their, their porch or front area to kind of show solidarity for the National Night Out that would have been.
Okay, and you know, I agree with everything you said. We're certainly gonna advertise and, and, you know, everything to the greatest extent possible, you know, again, and the only reason it isn't a Tuesday is because we had built it around National Night Out. Go ahead, Mrs. Salagi.
Yes, since this is August, a meeting in August, and it's already advertised to be in the boardroom, and we're talking about having the students come back to school, can we have this meeting in the school?
Well, I'm going to get to that next. As soon as I get everyone's okay to hold a regular meeting on the 3rd, that's the next thing I'm going to poll the board on.
Okay.
So any other-
Straw poll, Mr. Castellano?
Yes, so the poll is that August 3rd will be repurposed from a committee meeting to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM and advertised.
Mrs. Howke, if you can help me with regular meeting versus special meeting? How that should be advertised, because it's a special purpose, or?
It would be a special meeting.
Just making sure I word it correctly. Okay, so special meeting for August 3rd, 7:00 PM, Mr. Castellano?
Yes, but action, by regular, action can be taken.
Right, with action possibly taken. Okay, so I'll go through, and if you want to raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you and see if we have enough support. Mrs. Sullivan? Mrs. Salagi? Mrs. Byrd? Mr. Delabarka? Mrs. Summer? Mr. Price? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Mr. Castellano? Okay, unanimous. Very good. We'll take care of the advertisement.
Okay.
And the promotion, yep.
Yes, now, so the final thing that I'm going to ask the board is that, you know, we had said we were going to, by, you know, majority, decide if we needed to, if we were, in fact, going to, you know, return to an in-person meeting subject to, you know, all of our social distance and safety guidelines that, and I know Dr. Gruccio has worked on a list of those, and we'll, you know, shoot those out to everyone. Some, you know, much like our meeting that we held in March. So I'm going to now ask for a poll of the board if we want to return-
Mr. Price, I do have a question, Mr. President, if I may.
Sure.
I'm in support of meeting in person again, but is there also a possibility for maybe those board members that aren't comfortable to still do it virtually?
So I'm going to say that we, that that is an option, but what I'm, what I'm polling for, I'm looking for a majority to be there in person, so that we have an in-person, in-person quorum. I'm, I'm going to be there. I, you know, I think it's the, I think it's the appropriate time now.
Okay, so again, show of hands, and I can just recognize you for in-person, in-person meetings. So we have, Mr. Castellano said yes, Mrs. Byrd, Mrs. Sullivan, Mr. Price, Mrs. Salagi, and three noes. Five yeses, three noes.
I'd like to just comment, and I don't mind the in-person. I'm in favor of starting in person, but I prefer starting in September when the kids come back in the building. I think we should be there when the kids are back. It would look terrible to the community, and I'd really like to put it off another month for many other reasons.
I agree with Mr. Delabarka.
I'm in agreement with that as well, Mr. Delabarka.
And I just have a question too, because, and I'm, I'm sorry, but if we have executive, for example, will we be having executive out in the main boardroom or in the small room? Because I would prefer it to be in the main room where we can social distance more. And if we do go back to public, would the public be participating in the meeting in person, or would that be virtual as we're doing right now?
I'd like to make a comment on that. I would suggest that we have this meeting, the meeting on August 3rd would really be good for the stakeholders to see us all there and, and those that are virtual. But, you know, to put out the plan, and I'm suggesting we do it in the cafeteria where we can really, with a chair, socially distance everybody, because we're, I have a feeling there'll be a lot of people that are becoming for meetings to hear the final vote on what's going to happen. So I'd like to see it in the cafeteria.
So I think that's something we can certainly discuss. I think the issue with the cafeteria is, number one, proper microphones and cameras. You know, all of that is built into the infrastructure of the boardroom. So, but we can certainly discuss that. So then backing up with some of the questions, executive session would have to be in the, in the large room, and we would have to close that off. We wouldn't be able to social distance any other way. But for the 3rd, there won't be an executive session on the 3rd. We will be meeting at 7:00, but on the 11th, we would start with the executive session.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Sure.
So, so if we have a, if we come back in person, are we requiring people to wear masks? Because there is a, there is this whole, you know, to wear a mask and not to wear a mask situation going on. So what are we, what are we doing about that? And also, I guess I, I just, I agree with, with Mrs. Delabarka said about, you know, when the children come back, we start school in September. I think that would be appropriate to start the meetings in person. I don't think, I don't think that we are taking anything away from any of the stakeholders by not doing it in person. We've done it for, since March via, you know, using technology, and I think we've actually had more people come to our meetings than we have in person. And I just don't know if we're doing it because we, because we think that's, that's what people want to see, or we feel like that's what we should do, because it may look different if we don't have it in public. I'm not really sure how the other board members feel about that.
I think I want to go back, if that's okay, like, I, after hearing everyone's opinions and like what Lou said and Tamika just reiterated, that, you know, going back to September, you know, just like the students and the teachers and our staff, I like the way that sounds, and I think Tamika just made a great point where we have had more participation virtually than what we normally get in person. And our stakeholder meetings, Dr. Gruccio said, I think we had 800 participants virtually. So it seems that people are willing to participate virtually. And so I think that because we have such an age difference on the board, and we also have family members that have compromises, I think I want to go back. So I was a thumbs up, but I, I think now I'm a thumbs down, so I'm changing my vote.
Okay, I just want to try to answer a couple of questions. So in terms of the masks, you know, again, Dr. Gruccio has a set of standards for us, and yes, that will be part of it, that she's going to put out, you know, to us well in advance of, of the meeting. And distancing masks, you know, all of those things. And, you know, keep in mind, our staff is already back.
All right, Pete, I think we need to recheck the vote, because we might be tied.
Now, I'd like to say something before we do another vote. We've had protests in town where people have gone and worn masks. They've been fine. We have people going to the township committee meeting, and they're fine. And it's, it's a big difference of being in person than doing it virtually. The, right now, the public does not see all of us. They only see the person that is speaking. And they, it's very confusing as to what the vote was. They didn't know who voted, you know, by a show of hands. They don't know that. And I think that it would be leading by example to start in August before the students come back. And if we can do it both in person and virtually for those that don't want to, to come in person, then that would be okay too. But I think it's, it's time to go back. It's different doing it in person than it is this way, and, and the public's at a disadvantage by, by having to watch it this way.
I just want to add, I myself, I attended the township committee meeting, and they had it spaced out, and everyone had a mask on. I don't know, I'll still go back to the point of we go back when the students go back, and whether- We go back when the students go back and whether there's a protest or whether there was another organization in the township that did it that way. Um, like I said, I don't know if, if, you know, it's a, well, if people are in large groups, why can't we come inside and meet? But I mean, I don't, I still don't see um. The end goal that we, that we had, why we can't meet online. I mean, I do think that the people who come to the Zoom meetings for the board meetings or for the committee meetings we have for the road back. If we had 800 people participate. I don't, I don't understand what would be the difference between starting in August and starting in September.
That, when they did those meetings, the 800 people, it was through committees and they saw everybody like we see right now. The public does not see that.
How many people have you spoken to that said that they are confused? I think that's what we would need to find out.
There's a difference.
The group of people that are really confused.
By doing it like this.
You know, a lot, I'm just asking, is there a lot of people that you've spoken to? I'm just asking, is there a lot of people that she's maybe spoken to that called in, emailed and said that they're confused about the board meeting?
Yes, people-
About how many?
I don't count them, but people have, are having a problem with trying to follow what is going on. And even if they go back and watch the meeting recorded, it's still confusing. Just like we raised our hands, who, who voted yes, who voted no? They don't know that. Now they do because we've had discussion, but they don't know it that way.
Mr. President, just, just another point, I think. Uh, and I, I, you know, I've been really struggling with this because of my, you know, my particular position here. Um, I like the idea of going back when the, with, with, in person with the kids. I think that's really such a good example. But getting the information out regarding the whole new opening, whatever the plan is that we come up with and that we approve. That's going to get out to the parents via newspapers, articles, uh, letters from the district, all that detailed stuff, the survey that goes out. I don't really think the board being meeting would, one way or the other, is gonna make that much of an impact on the information out to the public. The information's going to be when we send it out, written wise, letters to the, from the administration, from the different school principals, et cetera. And have that big survey go out. That's when you're gonna get the response from all the new full-day kindergarten people, all the other folks involved. Uh, and uh, I don't know, Kim and Shonda and, and Steve, are you getting a lot of calls from parents right now saying, what's the plan, folks? I wanna know right now. I don't think so, to be honest with you. So, you know, it's our job as a board to get this done, get a plan, get the administration knowing what we're going. And then it's their job to get it out to everybody. When we meet, who cares?
Well, I have a comment on that.
Together and I wanted to be as in-person, I just think the right timing for that is September. Thank you.
I have a comment on that and my, my comment being that if we do it virtually. We're gonna be on the phone for hours talking to people where we're in person, whoever wanted to speak and let their minds be known. They could step up to a microphone and get it over with. Otherwise, we may be on, we may be taking calls all night.
Well, you know how, I led the meetings when we were going through the whole transgender discussion. And I was there for hours with people at the microphone, folks. So it's gonna be the same difference of people. Beginning of the year and we were doing that decision on full-day kindergarten. How long were we at our meeting listening to the people's microphone? I don't think it makes one bit of difference in the end, folks. We do our job, we get it out to the public, it'll happen.
Lou, just-
It's difficult for the public to get through on the phone. I think Shonda even has a hard time. We hear the people beeping through and we know somebody wants to get through and say something and then they give up.
A lot of, a lot of districts are having people email their questions prior to the meeting. And so if they can't get through, then we have a record and we answer the question that's read into the record. And I think that not knowing how board members vote, that could get hairy for some people for sure. If we're not technologically savvy or they're not manipulating the screen in a per, in, in a certain way. I know I get confused sometimes myself, so I totally can appreciate that point. But I think it's such an easy fix that we have media, we have Facebook, we have social media. We should be, at, at a minimum as a board, we should be posting after our meetings how board members voted for what we voted for. I mean, it doesn't all have to be all or nothing. We should be working, just like we've asked our teachers to reinvent their process. We as board members have to be a little flexible here and come up with more innovative ways to help our residents. Who might be struggling not knowing who votes for what. And come up with a way because we surely know our residents know how to use Facebook. Because that seems to be the best place for a lot of people to vent. So we know they can do it, so we should be putting it on our social media page, who votes for what? And then it's just simply, simply there. That's my opinion. And I think if some people wanna go virtual, some people wanna be live, that's, we should be able to accommodate that as well.
Pete, I have something I want to say. Um, yeah, I agree that I think that we definitely need to start meeting in person. Um, I'm more comfortable waiting until September. I'm not comfortable right now because of family circumstances, this meeting with a large group. Um, and like Christie said, if somebody from the public would like to email a question in prior, we can read that. Or if something comes up during the meeting and they can't get in touch with us, they can always submit a question after the meeting and somebody can contact them.
Okay, so what, what I'm gonna suggest now is, is let's, let's poll the board again. Uh, we, we've gotta move on to the agenda and we can come back and we can poll again later in the meeting. But we've gotta move on with the agenda. Go ahead, Tamika, last one.
Mr. President, I was just gonna say that Ms. Ny had her hand up for, she wanted to add something, I think.
Just on, thank you, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, just on voting, I just wanted to put it out there. We do have the watch videos live on the Board Docs link under Board of Education. And exactly when you vote and I click save, it's public to the community. So they do know exactly at the moment who voted how. And it is there, even though the minutes aren't published yet. So that is just, I just wanted to add that comment. Instead of publishing it on social media, it's actually on our website, on, under Board Docs.
And we might be able to say yes instead of putting a hand up.
And when you're putting your hand, if I'm calling your name, I know that's trying to expedite it. So I was just calling names out instead of waiting for you to verbally say it. So I know they don't get to see your face raising your hand. But I was trying to remedy that by just calling out your name when, when you raised your hand, so.
And maybe how we voted, that might help. If we say, you know, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, that's a yes, or Mrs. so-and-so.
When we did straw, when we did straw polls, hands up were yes, and I was calling that out, so I can repeat it, you know, we'll do, we can do something. We'll figure this out, guys, whatever. Whatever you need the board secretary to do.
Sorry, Mr. President, I just saw her hand up. I thought it might have helped.
Okay, that's good. I appreciate that. Uh, you wanna, uh, let, let's, let's revisit. Um, let's go on to uh, the meeting and we will poll, we will poll later. So let's let uh, Kim continue and then we'll get to our first public comment.
Okay, uh, Mr. Castellano, in the sake of uh, saving some time here, um, I was just gonna go review my district newsletter. Uh, the current reality um, had basically what I shared with you. Uh, Kevin's gonna um, present right now, but we're gonna go through it real quick. I shared uh, with the community and with our teachers, here's the timeline of what we're working on. I talk about, you know, the, the changes that, that could come down the road, but for the most part that we will be having. Um, a, a July 27th meeting uh, to discuss the feedback of the um, the subcommittees. And, and other than that, we just go through, um, and we highlight our road back to, to subcommittee planning meetings. We put a few pictures on there so folks can see. We highlight our summer hours. And student achievement and the climate and culture and the partnerships, um, everything's in place there. So if folks wanna go and see graduation, it's on there. Um. And uh, it really hasn't changed much over the last couple of weeks because we don't have much going on. But I will always update the first section of them and then at the end, at the very end. Um, I, I, I speak to the athletes and to the um, fine and performing arts kids. Uh, whenever there's an update uh, that comes along that way, their way. And this past week, that, you know, the NJ SIA um, did highlight and put out their plan. And um, stressed the fact that um, students will be working out in the summer. That's just working out, like, you know, let's, let's run and do push-ups and, and get strong and do some agility drills. And then they're gonna have a two-week hiatus because they want schools to get opened and plans to get in place. And then September 14th, they're going to begin um, with, with their practices, their, their hardcore practices. And then their games and events will begin um, September 28th with tennis, October 2nd football games and October 1st. Um, for other sports. Um. Keeping in mind and being inclusive of the whole comprehensive uh, education that we offer our students K through 12. Um, you know, we did have an athletic and a fine and performing arts committee, um, where there were many suggestions. So like all committees, suggestions were heard, but um, a lot of our planning um, did keep in mind of the, the NJ SIA rulings. And um, the, the start times and, you know, the schedule that our athletes have to follow. And I also wanna share, speaking of NJ SIA, I will be representing um, Atlantic County Superintendent's. Um, in Atlantic County Schools, as I sit on the executive uh, committee of NJ SIA um, starting in September. So um, um, I, I see that as an honor and I, I'm proud to represent Atlantic County. And um, I also will have uh, the firsthand information on um, how the NJ SIA will be proceeding beyond the fall season. Okay, so thank you. That is my report for tonight. Hopefully it was informative. Uh, I know we have a lot on our, our agenda, so um, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank, uh, thank you, Dr. Gruccio, for, for an excellent report overall. Uh, let's go ahead to our first uh, comment period, uh, public comment on uh, which is on agenda items only. Uh, three minutes. And again, uh, just by way of our ground rules. Um, we cannot speak on personnel and litigation. And if there's a complex question, it may be necessary for one of our administrative team to get back to you uh, with an answer. Um, so let's go ahead to our first comment period, which is on agenda items only.
Again, for agenda items only, you're gonna call 653-0100, extension 1417. There is a 30-second delay from the time we are speaking to the time it broadcasts. So go ahead and give a call. Uh, please do not leave a message if you don't get through on the first try. Thank you. Okay, we have a caller. Please state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Chrissy Williams. I live at 402 Drive East.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Yes, um, I just wanna say that I know it's been like a tough few months, you know, and I. One of the parents that had to deal with most of the online schooling situation. And I do have um, three kids right now attending at Harbor Township Schools. Two in high school, one in um, uh, going to second grade. Um, however, all of them have IEPs. So, and I am also a working mom. I work five days a week. My husband works five days a week, full-time. Um, and I, I feel like. For me, I, I feel like the in-school thing would be best for my situation. And people that I've talked to, we've all talked about it, but it's been a really tough situation. Because um, my daughter Ava couldn't even sit for five minutes during online. It was horrible. It was not a good situation. At first, the first couple of weeks were okay, but she, she just could not, she couldn't focus. It was, it was terrible. And, and then the kids were so um, you know, upset and, you know. And I mean, I guess there's a dangerous virus out there, but why can't we just like, I don't know, the Mac situation will work or, I, I don't know. I, I, I'm just nervous because I don't feel like she's gonna get the best education. And she's the type of kid that is just, she's all over the place. And I, I personally, I give your teachers a lot of credit. I don't know how y'all do it. Because I personally, I personally can't do it. I, I can't do online schooling. It's just too hard.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much for your comment. We hear you. Um, it's, this is a difficult time for everyone. And there are no clear answers on many things. We do appreciate your input. We invite you to participate in the upcoming uh, meetings that we will have. Uh, return, uh, regarding the road back. Um, and I just wanna remind callers again, this comment period is for agenda items. So things will be voting on tonight, so for agenda items, please. Um, thank you.
Public comment, name and address, please.
Hi, Suzanne Griffin, 232 Heather Croft, parent.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay, thanks. Um, my son plays sports at the high school and they've already missed their spring season. And now we have uh, fall coming up. My concern is if, God forbid, the fall season gets canceled, these kids will now have missed two seasons. Is there a way to allow them, allow them to um. Still be on the field if it's practicing, working out or whatnot, just so that they don't get stale? So it's just a suggestion and um, hopefully you guys will do it.
Thank you um, for the suggestion, but um, we know that high school sports are governed by the NJ SIA. Um, and we will follow their guidelines and directions, so it's mandated we have to. And, but as I stated, I do sit on that committee, um, so um, I will be able to share the sentiments. Thank you.
Yes, tha, so thank you for your comments very much. We appreciate that. Uh, but, uh, again, this comment period is for agenda items. Agenda items, please. Agenda items only during this first comment period.
Okay, it's been a full minute. We haven't had anybody ring through the previous caller either.
Okay, then, why don't we just finish up? We'll finish up with this poll of the board, so then we can move on to the rest of the agenda. I'm just going to restate, you know, my view that in August, you know, we have, we already have, and we will have staff in the building, we will have students in the buildings, and I think it's time for the board to be back in the buildings. So, you know, with that said, I'm going to, we'll poll the board on whether August 3rd should be... We're going to poll the board on what, just one sec, we're going to poll the board on whether August 3rd will be in person, or, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I'm on my cell phone, so I'm sorry if there's a little bit of a delay. But like I mentioned when we first started talking about this, I'm for coming back in person as soon as possible, but I would just like to see the ability for board members that aren't comfortable coming back in August to be able to continue virtually, whoever that may be. So they can continue as they're doing now, but we can also be there, the ones that choose to be in person with, you know, social distance requirements and so on and so forth. So I'm comfortable with that.
I agree with Mike.
Yeah. Yes, and that's, I agree, I agree as well. However, we will need a quorum in person. So that's why we're, you know, that's why we're polling. So let's go ahead, Chandra.
So raise your hands if you would be attending live sessions in August. And I will then call out if you're a yes. I mean, if you're a yes, that means you will attend live sessions. Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
August 3rd. So let's just deal with August 3rd.
August 3rd on its own for now.
And you said it has to be a quorum in person, Mr. President? It has to be a quorum in person, is that what you said?
Yes, I would like to have a quorum in person. We would need to have a quorum in person for this type of meeting. Yes.
So I'm confused. So we have, okay, so is the rule, or is it law that we have to have a quorum in person? Or does, because, or does it count if some are virtual? Like...
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm confused. So we don't...
Go ahead, Mrs. Alco.
So we don't have a policy on this. So traditionally, the advice would be if you're doing an in-person meeting, you should always have that quorum present because you don't want to have one person at a public meeting and then the rest of the people virtual. You would want to have a quorum present to be physically present to have the meeting. That way you would have your public there and everybody else there. And then if you need people to participate virtually or on the telephone, then that is something you could do. Because of COVID, the law allowed us to do virtual meetings, which we're doing now. But it doesn't talk about like a hybrid solution. So originally, the guidance when it first came out was to do a virtual meeting, you still need one person physically in the physical location. However, that had since changed, and now you could go completely virtually. However, if you're going to go back to advertise a public meeting in a public space, I believe the correct opinion is that you need a quorum of people at that public space for the meeting.
Is that a...
I'm sorry, I can't hear Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
We don't have a policy on it, and it's more so of, I'm just using the word opinion, or preference.
Yeah, this is Mr., I'd just like to make a comment. It would be similar to, I think, what our last meeting was. Is that correct? I'm sorry if I stepped on anybody, but it would be similar to what our last meeting was, right, Amy?
The last in-person meeting?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, the last in-person meeting, Mr. Price, where we were separated and we had people call in on the phone.
So, so what I'm saying is if we had that, that, you know, if we had that, someone needed, you know, and I do, and Ms. Delabarka, I'm not, I'm not picking on you. I just know that you said, you know, it's your preference in reference to your own personal reasons. And I just, I'm just going to say, and I just want to make sure that, you know, like, we're doing this, you know, for the right reasons and not trying to make a political statement about whether we're in person or not in person.
Just another comment. I love having the in-person. I can't stand doing these meetings like this. I feel like with all the delays and all the freezing and all that stuff, and I love seeing you folks in person. I think we interact much better in person. But I just think the appropriate time will be when the kids go back to school. That's when we go, we start, and we have the big fanfare. Here we go, folks, we're all in person again. And I'd rather wait than, and that's my only reason for delay until September.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead and poll for the 3rd, and then we'll move on. Go ahead, Chandra.
Okay, so please raise your hands if you're in favor of going to a live meeting on August 3rd. Now we'll recognize you. Okay, so a yes for Mrs. Sullivan, yes for Mr. Costellano, yes for Mr. Price, yes for Mrs. Salagi for August 3rd. So four.
Okay, so what I would propose we do then, as we're tied at 4-4, is that we will leave August 3rd virtual, and on August 3rd, we'll poll again for August 11. And, you know, the majority rules as it does with all things. Fair enough? Okay, hearing no further comment. Let's, let's move now to finance and operations. I'm first going to ask if there are any updates from the chair or our administration on finance and operations.
I'll pass that over to Chandra. Anything new since we last spoke?
I just have one quick update. We did add a transportation joint chair with special services on this agenda since the last meeting. And I just wanted to give some background. So last year, we charged the transportation department to come up with a transition plan as Mr. Fip is retiring. And it took the majority of the year, even with through COVID, to restructure the department, look at the runs, look at the staffing. We even redid the policy on how the staff is paid, the bus drivers, hourly versus per run. With that, the outcome at this point was that we were able to bring back five special ed runs that had been done out of district vendor, without, with out-of-district vendors. And this year, we're actually bidding 21 routes that we usually would have used special services or greater reg to bid for us. The results are coming in next week, and we're hoping that we'll be able to just go directly with the vendors. We have been put on notice by the state that the cost of transportation may increase due to COVID from these vendors, which may cause more non-public schools to get aid and loo rather than actually be eligible for busing. If you can recall, you can only spend so much per student for non-public school transport. So we have to try to stay under that threshold, and we're asking the vendors to help us out there. But we're on the right track. We're doing more and more in-house every year. We still need to fill the vacancies. So if you're interested in being a bus driver for I-Carver Township, please, please, please apply. We do need drivers. And that's just a brief update for that department.
Very good, thank you. So what I'd like to do now is first ask for a motion on our transfers, 7.1.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
I will second it. Rita?
Motion and a second. Any discussion on transfers? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
Sorry, I was muted, talking to myself. Mr. Delabarka, yes, thank you. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd? Mrs. Byrd?
I thought I said you, I believe. I apologize.
I'm not sure what you just said. I'm sorry. Can you unmute again?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I'm sorry. Yes, I voted yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Costellano?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
Okay. I'd now like to ask for a motion for 7.2 through 7.16.
I'll make that motion. Mrs. Sullivan?
Mr. Price, I'll second him.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? There she is. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, okay. Thank you. Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Costellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving now into personnel, I'm going to just ask Dr. Charlton if there are any updates or items to mention for public session.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, you know, there were 16 interview processes that wrapped up by the end of last week, the results of which you see in the appointments tonight. And the central office team just wanted to thank the board for your cooperation and patience as we go through the heaviest interview season of the year. So we are looking to take action on 8.1, excuse me, looking to take action on 8.1 through 8.5 tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Charlton. So I'm going to ask for a motion on 8.1 through 8.5, please.
Mr. Delabarka said motion. Make the motion.
Was I hearing Mrs. Salagi as well?
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Costellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move into policy. And I'll ask if there are any updates this week from, from the chair or administration.
I don't have any updates.
No, Mr. President, there are no updates at this time.
Very good, thank you. Then may I have a motion on 9.1 and 9.2, please?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Price.
Second.
Any discussion on policy? Hearing none, may we have roll call?
Mute.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? On mute, there you go. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? On mute, and then say it again. Okay.
Yes.
There you go. All right, Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Costellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, we have an updated board calendar, which is going to be updated again. And will, will come out soon. And then, so I'm just going to check in with Mr. Delabarka. Is there anything new from NJ SBA that you'd like to report to us?
We have not had a meeting since our last one, so nothing new. And I know that it's on your agenda. The virtual county meeting is August 10th, which is another Monday evening. So you'll be notified to join in with us on August 10th.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Lou. At this point, am I muted? No, I'm unmuted, muted. We are going to move now to public comment on any topic. Public comment now is on any topic whatsoever. Again, three minutes. And we cannot discuss personnel and litigation. We always remind folks of that. If, if the comment or question is very complicated, we may need for administration to get back to you with an answer. So we'll open this up again for public comment.
We had a caller, and the line is dead, so we'll just give a few more seconds to see if they call back.
Okay.
It may be a user error. They're calling, and there's just error on the other line, so I'll try one more time. They're calling back, hold on. Okay, no public comment.
No comment. Okay. All right, so what we're going to do then is comments from board members next, please.
Okay. Ms. Price, I would just like to make a comment.
Sure.
I want to, want to thank everybody for their hard work that we've been doing over the last couple of months. And the hard work continues every day, sometimes twice a day. Things are changing. And I would just like to say thank you, and... the hard work continues every day, sometimes twice a day, things are changing, and um, I would just like to say thank you, and um, everybody have a great week, and um, we'll see you on the 3rd online. And we are EHT strong, so that's my comments for this evening, and everyone have a great night. Thank you.
Mr. President, just so that I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I'd really like to thank Dr. Gruccio and our whole entire team for the beautiful video they did for the retirees that we had this past year. I really enjoyed looking at it, and when I see those people and the dedicated professionals that we've had working over many years in our district, I'm so very proud of each of them. I just want to wish each retiree a long, happy, healthy, many happy years of retirement. And thank you so much for all you did for the students of Acarbit Township, and uh, they did a great job. I hope all of you got to see the video, it was really well done. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Kim and your team, Leanna and the whole group.
Yeah, I s- I second that. Go ahead, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, go ahead.
I was go- I was just gonna say, um, there were a lot of, you know, different retirees, but I do have to say there were um, two young ladies, as I call them, that are retired from, from Alder. Um, Ms. Bane and Ms. Eichinger, and they were, they are just phenomenal educators, people, mothers, um, so I just was, I, I'm definitely happy for them, but sad for our district, um, and also, um, I believe one of our teachers at Miller, she didn't retire, but she moved on to an assistant principal's job um, in another district, and I just wanted to say congratulations to her. Another again, again, you know, sad for us, but happy for, for her. Um, a very, I g- I wanna say the word popular teacher, but just, you know, all the children really uh, took to her. She was a great educator as well. And I just want to say to the public that um, just to reiterate, everything that Dr. Gruccio and her team are doing to get multiple plans in place, just want to tell you that um, EHT by no means is dragging their feet. Um, every district in this state, I'm only talking for the state of New Jersey, um, even for the one that I work, that I work for, everyone is meeting, having committee meetings, getting information from stakeholders, and sitting down at the table and at the drawing board, coming up, sketching a plan that's gonna fit tailored to their particular district. So EHT being one of, not being one of the, but the largest district in Atlanta County, I just want the public to take in mind that, I just want you all to know that there's no way that this is a, this is not a last-minute kinda situation. Um, everyone is trying to put together a plan that works best for their, for their district and their stakeholders. So I just, I really do commend um, Central Office Administration, staff, the teachers, everyone, but especially Central Administration, they really, it's, it's a, it's a big job, and um, just, you know, glad to see that we're, you know, on the forefront, and we're gonna make it happen, and everyone's not gonna be in love with each plan, or it may not, you know, people may agree or disagree with it, but I just, you know, know that there's a lot of thought being put into it across the state, and especially in Acarbit Township. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
You know, he, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I would be negligent if I didn't mention it. Is, is Skip Phipp really retiring? I mean, and he's had outstanding contributions he's made over the years, and I have to, I just have to personally mention, not leaving anybody out, because I work with so many of those people. I have to mention Maria Morano, she was my outstanding assistant principal for so many years, and uh, did a great job, and I want to, hopefully, hopefully she has a great, happy, long retirement. But all of the people were so great to work with over the years, and uh, we're gonna miss them, but we move on and, and hu- wish them all the best.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna echo that, Lu. I, you know, wanna congratulate all our retirees, the video was beautiful. Uh, I actually saw it live, because I was there and right after graduation. And uh, I understand we are going to be uh, having our traditional retirement dinner at some point in the fall as well. Uh, so I'll, I'll see if there are any other uh, board member comments, please. Any other board members? All right, just a couple of quick things from me, then before I turn it to uh, administration. I just want to thank the board for working uh, together uh, this evening and for working as hard as we did. We had a lot of things to get done, we had a lot of decisions to make, a lot of things to chew on, uh, and, and it's, it's gonna continue to be difficult. So I just want to thank you for the teamwork uh, and, and the cooperation. Uh, you know, we worked very hard, we worked together very well. Um, and uh, again, you know, I want to emphasize that our, our road back is job one, and we're really looking for everyone's cooperation, and for everyone to uh, work together on this uh, as, as we move forward. So I'll, uh, with, with that, I'm gonna see if the administration has final comments.
I have trouble with that button, but y- yes, just, you know, same comments. First of all, thank you, everyone, uh, for your support, your understanding and your patience. Um, congratulations to, to our retirees, um, you know, I, I feel so bad because your exit um, and, and your year for cheer um, just wasn't like it used to be uh, in the past, it wasn't the same. But we, we congratulate you all, we thank you for your service, and uh, we really look forward to September 17th uh, when we will have that um, retirement dinner, and hopefully we can break bread and celebrate together like, like we always do. But um, you know, congratulations, thank you to everyone again. Um, I look forward to um, getting to the end of the road, if you will, um, but uh, we still have some bumps and roadblocks to get through. Uh, hopefully, we'll iron more of them out tomorrow for you, so you don't have to sit through the agony, and we have some concrete examples and plans that you can um, you know, weigh in on and give us your opinion, and then we, from there, we can present a plan to our um, patient community, if you will. Okay, so again, thank you for your kind words, um, um, Tamika, um, you know, I know you're in, in the trenches as well. I'm sure on your planning committees, um, and you, you feel the pain uh, that we're all feeling um, at the administrative level. But again, um, thank you all for your understanding. Uh, we are a team, we are hashtag EHT strong, and like anything else, we're gonna get through this together, and uh, we're gonna get through this uh, for the health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff. So thank you and good night.
And Dr. Gruccio, I have a suggestion. I know you usually have a song that you go along with, you know, of your presentations. I want to suggest "Boys to Men," "The End of the Road." We come to the end of the road, so just, you don't have to use it, I mean, just a suggestion. On a lighter note, right? Appropriate.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. Um, and thank you all who are uh, watching and listening uh, live and who will watch and listen to the recording, and uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
This is Mr. Price, I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I will second it, Mrs. Sullivan.
Very good. Show of hands? We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.